Ron?
Ron?
Good, okay. So, of course we don't have any agenda to approve. So, we have orders which we've just had and signed. And so, any other adjustments to the agenda? Not so, right? So, do I think to say, Ron? Public content?
I didn't hear you.
You want to make any comments?
I don't know why I didn't hear you.
Anything in general?
No.
Okay.
That's what I normally do.
Okay. All right. So, new business, abstract grand list extension. That's what you guys are here for, so I think you probably explained. And hopefully, public can hear what you're saying.
Yep. So we, I got a mic right here, I guess. So, as warned, we lodged the abstract grand list on Monday, the 3rd. So, one week ago today. We printed out the abstract, we lodged it, we sent out individual notices for change of appraisal to every single taxable property owner because it's a revale year. After they were mailed out, we discovered we had two problems with the grand list, the abstract grand list. One was, we had the wrong grievance date on there. So, it was more of a typo, but we had the 3rd on there, so it said the 18th for the date of the beginning of grievance. But more importantly, then we discovered also that the actual values were wrong for about a third of all properties because of a software error. And we've been fighting this software issues for a while. We've got documentation going back months about this. We thought we had it done, but we thought we were done with it, but we weren't. So, after talking, so as soon as we realized that, we were talking to our district advisor, we were talking with VLCT. Basically, they said, "Okay, you've got a defective abstract grand list. Here's what you gotta do."
Doug, I'm not sure who the players are there. I know VLTC is your software vendor.
No. VLCT is the Mont League of Cities and Towns.
Oh, okay, yes.
So, they're one of our legal presentations.
Yes, right.
PBR is the Department of State, direct property review and property valuation and review.
Okay.
So, that's like the tax department.
Yeah.
And so, there's a single key software that everybody in the state must use to communicate with the state. That's what we've been having trouble with, the software vendor. So, I'm just gonna say we've got documented problems that go back a ways. We thought we were good, but we weren't. So, the steps recommended by both VLCT and the tax department was that we file for an immediate 30-day extension. That's the kind of one-size extension you get. So, even if we were able to turn this around quickly, we still have a 30-day extension. Other deadlines start triggering based on when we do actually file. But at this point in the game, I think our best case going forward is we continue to verify that things are correct now. Because in one way, we think it's, we think the issue's been corrected, but we basically printed out all the paperwork on everybody, and we're checking it against other lists to make sure that we absolutely, this is what it should be. So, that process is gonna take us a few more days. So, things could go as quickly as if we feel like we've got everything verified properly by late in the week, we could print everything out, stuff envelopes over the weekend, and mail again one week from today. There would be a new grievance date, and if it went that way, then as I just described, that formal grievance would then start on July 2nd. And then we would do our grievance cases, and talking with Dave, I believe that even if it started a full month later, that we would have time enough to not impact the tax bills going out. And I believe that's like the next painful thing that could probably happen, but...
How long does the grievance period last? So, if it starts on the 2nd, how long do people have?
It starts out, the way it's written is you, basically you indicate, "Here's a day of grievance," and you give hours during that day. And then there's a phrase that's like, "From day to day thereafter until all grievances are heard." So, in a year like this, when we have reappraisal, they say 10 to 20 percent of people are gonna grieve. So, that's 150 or 300 people, which is a lot. And so, we did the math, and we said, "Okay, if we start hearing 15 cases a day," which is as much as we could possibly do, that's not everything, that's just hearing them. That's a 15-minute session for them to tell us what their problem is, and we make sure we understand their issue. Then we start to go out and look at it, make some determinations. We have to file meeting minutes. We get a lot of other paperwork we gotta do for that. But the concern would've been, it just blows out too long. And it really depends on how many people grieve. So, we start, we're gonna start, let's say, for these purposes on the 2nd. We would hear people on the 2nd and 3rd take a break for the 4th of July, come back, just start hearing cases as much as we can. And in the meantime, other people will be looking, there's gonna be a lot of work going on, but there's, hearing the case, just hearing the grievance has that two listers to do that. And while we're doing that, there's efficiencies we can have, like other people can be going out and doing inspections if we need to do another inspection, a lot of places we didn't get into, the people we've been talking to already, "Well, this isn't right, this isn't right." And, "Did we get it to your house?" "No, you didn't." Like, okay, so that's, we're kind of expecting that stuff to happen. So, we're gonna try to revisit as many as we can, it's practical to verify stuff like that. But it's hard to say how long it will actually take, because in a grievance year, you expect a lot of traffic. And the very fact that we had this error probably means we're gonna get more traffic, because people aren't getting warm and fuzzy feeling about it. So, we wanna make sure we get it right the second time, and everybody gets a chance to grieve.
Third question. We're back to the main problem. Do you know what the grand list is?
I think I do, but I don't wanna tell you the number until we've finished this.
No, we're not looking for a number. I'm just asking if you know it or not.
So, I believe we do.
Okay, so then... And I want everything, every one of these things you put in an envelope is a part of that, and it should add up to that number. Isn't there a way to cross-check?
That's not, that's not quite right.
No?
Because this is a change of appraisal going out. This doesn't take current use into account, although if you are current use, you've got a separate current use thing. This doesn't take into account in contracts the town has, like with North Harlem LLC, I know, for instance. It doesn't take, so there's other things that the grand list, so veterans exemptions, for instance.
But you still should be able to reconcile all of that.
That's right, that's right. And I do have a number.
And what I'm getting at is, is some way to double-check to make sure, just like any accounting, that the bottom line is right.
That's right.
And everything in it is right.
And we are going to the very most basic level of that. We printed out everybody's information on Friday, took us all day printing out, and we're cross-checking against a couple of other lists to make sure that that's right. But with the nature of this particular issue, the 411 form, which is like the summary of the grand list that we use to calculate, was also wrong because of where the problem originated.
Yeah, I can't see how you get a grand list if the basic numbers are wrong.
Right. And that was part of the problem, it was not complete agreement, and that's the issue. That's the biggest number one thing. So, we started, we identified early on, like last week, we found out on Thursday, by the end of the day, Thursday, we've been working with a software company, and we think we got it right, but just to be sure, we're doing the whole thing longhand, if you will, we're printing it all out.
Are other towns having the same problem?
Some other towns do. We've been having, I've been focused on us, and I gotta tell you though, for months we have been having some issues and getting them resolved as we thought we were, but obviously we were still something hanging up there.
If I could, Gordon, if I could follow up on that question, because I, I'm sure you both have a sinking feeling in your stomach with this. But I find it troublesome that you sense there were errors, you were working with the vendor, and yet there's a launch. That the vendor either assured you, or, I mean, was there any testing on their part that could convince you, or is it really just going back to...
Well, with the timeframe that we had before, most of the testing was on our part to make sure of these various things. We ran reports, for instance, to look at, once we thought we had some real values, the first step we did was, we checked what the system was telling us compared to recent sales. So, that's one of our steps anyway, because all, the new appraisals must be tied to recent sales. And we verified that, and said, "Okay, we think we're accurate, we're actually looking pretty good on that." So, then we felt confident to move forward to the next step, which was to look at all the values for everybody. So, we looked at the, we looked at that in a couple of different ways. We looked at the percent change before and after. Some people changed a lot, because you had, say, a property was just land, and now you built a house, so the percentage that went really way up. A lot of stuff in the middle was pretty flat, like essentially unchanged. Then the ones that went down the most tended to be either somebody had split their property or something like that, sold off most of their land, or they were previously over assessed.
But I just, let me back up a little bit. What was the error? I mean, do we know, is the vendor able to sort of say, "This line of code caused this," or...
We're not into that level of stuff yet. We have a situation where we're working with them, they do have a log, we can go back and look at keystrokes and see what happened. We've done that a little bit, but the main, the timely thing to happen was for this process to happen in parallel. So, we need to get an extension, that's like the number one thing. Then, as we continue to work these issues, we at least are legally protected enough to do that.
Yeah. No, I, you're absolutely correct. I mean, there was multiple issues tonight to decide.
But I think we have a fairly good handle on what didn't happen that should've happened, that should've happened. But again, we wanna just start on a very granular level by printing everything out, double-checking everything at that.
What are you double-checking to?
We're double-checking it to a list generated by...
Software.
By the other software. Yes, that's right.
It's a slippery slope.
I get to play the hand on doubtless. So, the best we can do is take this report that says, "What changed from last year? What parcels changed compared to last year?" That's what we're checking against. Everybody's parcel. So, there's...
And I, you know, kudos to you guys for sort of doing the legwork. When I walked in the other day, Craig, you were up to your eyeballs with the list and cross-checking, and you were too busy.
Yeah, you were a old-fashioned lady.
No, I understand that. And I just hope that the vendor's doing the same thing right now. You know, are they...
We've been pulling them in. Tomorrow, I'll get another series of calls. We've been in contact with them, they know we're not thrilled, they know, that's why I've been working with them on the basis.
So, you answered the question, we're not really sure if other towns are experiencing the same type of software glitch at this point.
I don't know the other, partly it's, we are pushing it hard, because we're doing a revale.
Yeah.
This is gonna find any mistake, like we're just wading right into it. We're gonna, we're gonna push this as hard as anybody pushes it, we're gonna revale you.
I can't say this, I do remember Tom and Clarissa both mentioning a couple of months ago, they were experiencing the same glitch concerning outbuildings in other towns.
Here's, on a granular level, there's probably 25 issues we've been working on. And some of them, the answer is, yes, we've verified that you have this problem. And the fix is something else. You know, when you talk to a programmer, he's worried about programming.
Yeah. I said something to Craig, just briefly.
I asked Clarissa, too, about that.
There's a rule of thumb in programming, that you have to sort of build a fence around where you think the error is. And it sounds like these guys are just waiting in a mud field right now, I'm not sure where to look.
They've been responsive to us when we're doing stuff. I mean, I think I, you know, made a point, like it was a month ago, or whatever it was, and working on Sunday, and, you know, talking to the programmer. He responded from home, they went upstairs, and seven o'clock on a Sunday morning, and working through it, what it's like.
And you've given the vendor an error list?
Yeah, we've been working on stuff. As I can, I send them screenshots of what I'm seeing for errors.
And can they reproduce the error?
In some cases, yes, in some cases, no. So, we've certainly been working this, but we're also up against a, "We're in a canoe, we're in the rapids, here we go, I better have a chance to stop."
Again, I can run with this one, because that's obviously been 30-something years to this.
Right. And so, we, it's, like I said, there's a log in there, we can look at keystroke by keystroke of what happened and when, and all that kind of stuff. But the focus is more on the immediate, immediate date.
If it's appropriate, I'd be happy to try to assist you without getting in the way in that part.
Thanks. I think we're working closely with them, and I think, like I said, right now, my main thing is to make sure that we have, that we, the listers, are all satisfied and that things are correct before we send this out again.
Right. No, I would say, I'm sitting here tonight, and I wouldn't vote, don't send them out. You know, we're not making that vote tonight, but I, you...
And I'm not ready to send them out.
No, I understand.
But I do need to...
And we have 30 days from whenever we sign this. 29 days, 28 days?
So, from when you sign that, hopefully that you will sign, and actually there's a different version, because I wrote this to the select board, and later, today I learned that, so what I really need to do is send my letter to Jill Remick, the head of PBR. So, if you approve this, and you get a signature on this...
That's what you'll end up needing.
This is what we want, yeah, in order to act at the state level. It's essentially the same thing I wrote here, but there's room for select boards. And this meets, I believe this meets all the legal requirements to do this, so we've cited the proper statutes by which we are acting, and all that kind of stuff. And talking with people at the state today, we should get same-day approval on this.
Would we be, how do we notify our, all the taxpayers, by mail?
So, what I, and I also asked questions about this with VLCT, as well as with, at the state level. So, tomorrow, we already have an informational meeting scheduled to, at 7:00 tomorrow upstairs. So, at that meeting, I wanted to talk about all of this, and I'm, you know, I'm trying to be transparent about this, but we didn't wanna speak anything before you had approved yet. So, what I would do, and approval, is send this out, get this started at the state level, but I would like to put something out tomorrow on the listserv, and we can put something on our website and talk to it tomorrow night at the meeting.
But what about people that aren't on listserv?
So, people who aren't, that was my concern. We're only telling some people and not all people. But the intent is, as soon as we possibly are confident, we're gonna send out another notice that says right on it, in it, that this is, you know, this over supersedes the old notice. There'll be a little explainer of why what happened, you know. And so, it'll be an amended certificate of change of appraisal, excuse me, amended change of appraisal notice. We will lodge an amended grand list on the same day we mail it out. It'll be the same thing, just two weeks later, we're repeating everything we just did on last Monday. So, that we have to legally warn it, we have to put ads in paper, we need an extra document, a certificate of amendment, we need to have our newspaper ads run for a full two weeks instead of just a few days and stuff. So, there are some other slight changes, but it's of a similar nature.
Sure, sure, sure. I don't know what others think about notifying everyone, or not. What are your thoughts on...
Well, they will be notified, because everybody's getting a new appraisal.
Well...
So, everybody will be getting a new appraisal.
If someone has a wrong one right now, and they're sitting there with a wrong one on their desk, and they don't know it's wrong...
They don't know it's wrong, but, so we're gonna try to notify people as best we can. So, after, so I guess the long story short is, get approval first, now we can operate legally. We let people know what's going on, to expect another letter in a week or so, as best we can, but we don't have to send another letter out to Colorado to those people to say, "Hey, you're gonna get a letter in a week. It's okay to," like, just do it as soon as we can. When that second one goes out, we'll explain the situation, and clearly indicate that the previous notice was an error, and here's the new one. Although, I do expect that the majority of people, you know, it's about a third of them changed, so two-thirds by definition didn't change. So, but we have to just, essentially, the cleanest legal way to do is to start over, you have new grievance date. We've been talking to a lot of people already about grieving, we captured all their names. Nobody will be denied the chance to grieve, that's the real thing that we need to make sure of.
Phil, nobody knows whether they're right or wrong.
Yeah, I know.
And even those that are right don't know that.
Well, we couldn't say anything until, we talked to legal counselors, like, you know what, we shouldn't say anything until we talk to you. I mean, last Friday, if we put something out, that would put you guys on a weird place, and I'd do that, be like that, or set ourselves up for...
I mean, I think that whatever you say, it's, say minimal, you know, there's blame on the software, the software glitch, and...
That's the primary thing, although in all honesty, the fact we get that dig wrong, that typo, that would be just as, we'd have to do it all over again anyway. So, that being said, the real thing was about the software glitch, and making sure that we have got the right values going out this time.
Yeah, okay.
You know, it's not where we want to be, but the fact that there's a scenario like this, we're not the first ones to do it, and people who's working through this, both the software guys and the people at the state were saying, "Oh, wow, you should've heard this one, a couple of years ago, so-and-so did this, that was really bad," you know. So, the fact that there is now a process to clearly deal with this, I think that's, legally, we're trying to just jump back on the rails in that way as best we can, and move forward with what really matters here, so...
Do you need a motion or anything?
You need to make a motion to extend the abstract grand list 30 days. And to, basically...
That's all, you give that...
Where's the letter?
I think we want to say we're gonna, the taxpayers will be notified of the correction.
Basically, you want to make a motion granting, you know, basically granting the 30-day extension to the listers to correct the grand list, and...
We'd approve our request, and then I think that's, we can send that.
Yeah, to extend the abstract grand list 30 days.
Okay.
I make the motion that we approved, we approved that the listers extend the 2019 abstract grand list for 30 days.
I think that will suffice it.
Oh, second, second. Okay, so we're all in favor of this?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so, we'll sign this, if I can start.
You pick it up. Is it the right one, you have it? Yes, it is.
We sign on the bottom there.
Just the bottom where it says, "Select board approve."
Get it down, I'm gonna clear it up, I'm from that nice space.
When you do the manual checks now, how do you, how do you know those numbers are solid, are those from different logs?
After, after going through, that's right.
Of course.
The act of printing out the cost sheet actually forces a calculation. It was, those calculations weren't all done, which was more of the nature of the problem, We went through stuff with the VP of Remrick, and he took over my computer by remote control, and spent a couple hours giving to everything, and banging on it to make sure it looked right, but that was the only thing that really bothered. It was comparing, comparing last year's to this year to see if things changed.
Do we change the mode yet of this, how we're using your software?
Can we change the mode?
Yeah, is the software still here, or is it up in wherever it is?
We have local, it runs off of our server.
A local version here?
Yeah.
Okay.
But it's constantly updated by them.
So, they're thinking, you know...
The really long-term, I mean, the state is looking for a replacement for the software, has been put out progressive quotes in there in the middle of that process, but...
Something to think about is, with your log, when you started noticing errors, what version was it, and how many versions have gone on since, you know?
We update, you know, for a while, they, you know, they update fairly often. So, we have the current version, we're always working on the current version. We're, it's easy to notify people if you don't have the right version, so that, you know, we definitely have the right version to this, and even, and so, like I said, some of these issues show up everywhere for all towns, or something, and some, we're still trying to figure out if it's just us using this in a way that the people aren't somehow that is causing this, and whatever. So, they've certainly been working on that, but it's, yeah. Plan A did not involve this.
It's just that...
Thank you.
Is there anything else that we can do to help at this point?
I think not. You could attend the meeting tomorrow night upstairs.
We need all support.
We, so like I say, I plan on putting the stating out tomorrow, where people, people around here know what's happened, what is moving forward.
Was tomorrow night perceived as the first grievance night?
No, it was put out as an informational meeting.
Informationally.
And originally, we said this time now that we're in was an informal grievance time, so a lot of people have been coming in, saying they got issues, we're making sure we have their name and contact information, so we're not dropping anybody, but we've also been explaining we had this issue we have to deal with first.
So, if I'm sitting there tomorrow night, and I ask you, is my tax bill right along? You wouldn't be able to answer that.
Well, A, you don't have a tax bill yet. This is a change of appraisal, and I get that quite a lot. So, this is a change of appraisal that you gotta notice, there's a chance that it's not right, I'm not gonna start digging in with it till we know we're talking about the right numbers.
Okay, good.
We would encourage you to come into our office or call us.
Right. And so, like during a normal grievance, then we could sit down, open up, and talk about, make sure we have the inventory right, make sure we understand the issue, vigil issues. But tomorrow night is more of a general information. If there's questions, you know, we'll be fielding questions, and if it's something that's, you know, applicable to other people, we'll do our best to answer it, if it's very much specific to one parcel, that's not the form.
I just, my biggest fear right now is that you guys are gonna do all the bench testing and heavy lifting, and you're still gonna be, the software engineers are not gonna have addressed the problem.
Some of them, I know that that's true, because they're not software decisions per se, but an assessment decision that goes into the programming.
That goes into the rules of...
Of the rules, you know, so there's the programming basics, but then there's also how they treat things, and that takes longer, and it's more complicated. It's documented, it's known, but getting into, getting into the weeds more, more than trying to stay on, focused on, that's it.
You can run down a rabbit hole real quickly, and it'll be the wrong one.
Yeah, that's right.
Is the constable doing the animal control?
Kate Rowland's still animal control.
So, she doesn't do, she doesn't follow up on these rather than the constable?
So, I think, it hasn't written like Clyde, but I think that this...
Are we all set?
Yeah.
Excuse ourselves.
He's got it to the constable, oh, constable or police officer. Tammy did it before, but she might have been both.
So this is basically saying that, this is, this is to, yes, she did both, but this is basically telling James that they are to be impounded, and if they cannot be found a home, James can shoot it.
Or...
To be blind.
Disposal of it in a humane way, is what it says. Yeah, I think it's passing the heavy, the heavy part off to the, to James or a police officer.
To be destroyed, I mean, it's, it's a, it's an obloch, so, but we haven't...
We've never done it.
We haven't done that in my tenure anyways, but that's essentially what it's saying.
We've never done it.
So I think that's why it's addressed to James.
We need the, I guess we need the authority to do that, and we have to have a, I suppose it's a deterrent, or it's a, it's a, telling people that honing a dog is a serious thing to do it right.
Wait, you're right, Kate, Will, if there is one out and about, the animal control officer has impounded it and brought it to upper belly.
Those, that list is just unlicensed dogs, though, isn't it? On the back?
I believe so. So you guys need to make a motion on that as well, to see if we can sign it, but...
Still not getting the gist of it, so if someone doesn't have a license, we shoot the dog?
Actually, yeah.
It's pretty straightforward.
You have the authority to do that.
You're, you're giving the constable the authority to do that.
Don't use the word...
Well, I understand that, I hope James does.
I hope so too, but I mean, I would say that we, should there be a problem or something? I didn't notice that in there.
Essentially, state statute, it is what it is, and you need to sign it, but, and brief, but it does give the authority to the constable and/or police officer to handle an unlicensed dog in such manner.
Can we try for a motion, Matt?
Oh, boy. I can hand it right back to the fella, because I don't...
I was gonna give it to Gordon.
I don't.
Let's make as abstract as we can. I'd like to make a motion that we move forward with the...
Dog warrant.
The dog warrant, and I'm looking for a number. The dog warrant is signed on the 10th of June, 2019, is that, I don't see any identifier.
Does that do it for you?
You could say that the 2019 unlicensed dog warrant is approved as presented by the town clerk. The town clerk is responsible for licensing the dogs, for not licensed by a certain time, and he hands over a dog warrant to the constable of the town, telling him that they can be impounded or can't find a home for them.
Could we just say all that, and that's what, that's what the whole statute says?
All you need to do is accept the 2019 unlicensed dog warrant as presented by the town clerk.
Okay. Make a motion to, like, the select board, select board what, represent, receive, what was, what was the verb?
Accept.
Accept, the state of Vermont.
The 2019 unlicensed dog warrant.
Okay, got that? Who's taking the minutes?
Guess I am.
That's just what we're duty.
I think that's, I think that's sufficient.
Yep.
Yeah, I'll second it.
So we all, we all...
Yep.
Okay, so you're gonna get that in the minutes, I'm sure you know how it works.
Can you edit that on the film, please?
That's okay.
Before you go anywhere, though, just a second. Phil, you made the motion?
Yes.
Who was it seconded by?
Matt.
Unanimous? Yes. The original one prior was made by Matt, was made by you? Who seconded the original? Phil did? And that was also unanimous? I'll get the wording off of the, off the CATV version, I'll go back and get it, I won't make you rego it.
That's good, James, I forgot it.
I'd be happy to try, I'll read your, I can read your writing, I'll restate it.
So, I think we've come to the end of the agenda, is there any...
Are you all set, Dave, as far as the meeting?
Correspondents, anything else?
Just wanna make sure I got everybody here. Todd. A-U-T-U-M-N?
Yeah, I got it.
She's in there.
I'm good.
So very good?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Okay, we're done.
You have the kind of bad news today. Well, they still think he can save his eye, but...